This is five o'clock and this is straight off satellite.
I'm gonna call to order the City of Rainbow City City Council meeting for February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, and I'm gonna ask Jamison Jenkins if he'll give the invocation. That'll be followed by the pledge of allegiance. Would you stand?
Let us pray. Lord, we love you. We thank you for this day that you have so graciously blessed us with. God, I thank you for each person in this room. God, I thank you for the opportunity to serve the citizens of Rainbow City. I thank you for choosing us. God and I ask that each decision that we make would be guided and directed by you and that it would ultimately glorify you and be to the benefit of the citizens of Rainbow City. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you turn your cell phones to the off or vibrate position, we'd appreciate it, and I ask clerk if she'll take a roll call.
Anita Bedwell, Randy Weiss, Jeff Prince, Jamison Jenkins, Clark Hopper, Mayor Taylor.
Here. Number five has approved the minutes of the regular meeting of January twenty-third of twenty twenty-three, and I'd entertain a motion that we do so. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number six to accept the bids for the surplus items. We had two bids, and one was from Katie McDaniel for twenty dollars for the chair mats, and we had another one for the HP Jet Pro printer, and that was from Linda Cleveland, and it was for twenty-five dollars, and we'll get with those people, and I'd entertain a motion that we surplus those items. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye. Any opposed? Number seven is retirement of Shirley D. Mullenax from the library effective April first of twenty twenty-three, and to post a full-time library position for ten days to end on Thursday, February twenty-third of twenty twenty-three, and I'd entertain a motion that we accept this retirement and post that job. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye. Any opposed? Number eight is to open a new checking account at the exchange bank, which will be named twenty twenty-three bond account, and I'd entertain a motion that we be allowed to open that account. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye. Any opposed? Number nine is contract agreement with the Gadsden-Edgewall Industrial Development Authority. The city will pay four thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars per month for a one-year period for marketing consulting services for industrial property located in Rainbow City. And I'd entertain a motion that we allow me to sign this agreement. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye. Any opposed? Number ten is ordinance number five seven four is to establish the fee to be charged for checks returned by financial institutions for insufficient funds, including online payments. And I'd need a motion to introduce this ordinance. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye. I need a motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration. Is there any discussion? Clerk, we take a roll call.
Anita Bedwell, Randy Weiss, Jeff Prince, Jamison Jenkins, Clark Hopper, Mayor Taylor.
Yes. Is there a motion to adopt? Clerk, we take a roll call.
Anita Bedwell, Randy Weiss, Jeff Prince, Jamison Jenkins, Clark Hopper, Mayor Taylor.
Yes. Number eleven is a resolution number twenty-three dash oh-one A, and that's an agreement approving and adopting a proposal that City of Rainbow City agree with Edgewall County Commission to pay one-half of an interstate access request, IAR, for the new interchange on I fifty-nine at the near mega site to be performed by GMC. And I'd entertain a motion that we pass this resolution. Didn't have a motion in a second. Okay. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye. Any opposed? Number twelve is resolution number twenty-three dash oh-two, and that's the operations manual for the Rainbow City Fire Department. This is just a housekeeping resolution that to put the operations manual and the special, the standard operational procedures for the fire department in place, and I'd entertain a motion that we pass this resolution. Is there any discussion? Chief, do you have anything? Those in favor by saying aye. Any opposed? Resolution passes. Number thirteen is proclamation twenty-three dash oh-two, and I'm gonna ask the clerk if she would read that for us. I do wanna take just a minute and just a point of privilege to speak about, this is about Marjorie Bailey Bowling, and Marjorie is a member of our community, just a really, really special lady. I remember campaigning up and down her road and getting a chance to stop and speak with her, and we had the commonality of family that were firefighters, and me being a former firefighter, we sat there and spent time just talking about what all that meant to her and what it meant to me in my life, and I just appreciate her so much, and we got an opportunity, Mary Kate Herford-Four actually called me, she's one of her physical therapists and, or social worker, I'm sorry, and she called me and asked me if there was any way that we could send a fire truck by for her hundred and first birthday, and I said, I think we can do a little bit more than that, and so we ended up carrying just as many police officers as we possibly could and several fire trucks, and we did a little parade on her street for her, and she was thrilled to death. She was out on the front porch, and it was a little chilly, but we wrapped her up and made sure that she was warm, but it was just a really good time to get out there and spend some time with her, and a hundred and one years old, that's no joke, and we're thrilled to have her as a resident in the City of Rainbow City, and I'll ask Beth if she'll read this proclamation.
Whereas Marjorie Bailey was born nine of twelve children on Saturday, January twenty-eighth, nineteen twenty-two, to Albert in Georgia, May Bailey, in Coleman County, Alabama, while Warren G. Harding served as President of the United States, and whereas she grew up at her birthplace, attending J.B. Pennington School in Bluntsville, and whereas at the age of eighteen, she married Kenneth and were married for seventy-four years, and whereas they were blessed with four children, eleven grandchildren, twelve great-grandchildren, and eight great-great-grandchildren, and whereas she was a homemaker and a perfect example of the proverb's thirty-one woman by looking well to the ways of her household, being a helpmate to her husband and caring for her children, and whereas for twenty years, from the early fifties to the early seventies, she was known as the Avon Lady in the Cotton Mill Village, and whereas she and her husband resided in Gadsden, where he retired from the Gadsden Fire Department, and whereas she is a member of Goodyear Heights Baptist Church and currently living with her daughter in Rainbow City, and whereas we ask all residents of our community to join me in congratulating her being the second citizen inducted into the Rainbow City Centenarian Club, and now therefore I, Joe Taylor, Mayor of the City of Rainbow City, Alabama, do hereby proclaim, February thirteen, twenty twenty-three, as Marjorie Bowling Day in Rainbow City, Alabama, and recognize her for personal sacrifices and accomplishments as we celebrate this remarkable milestone on her hundredth and first birthday. In witness thereof, I here too set my hand and affix the official corporate seal of the City of Rainbow City this the thirteenth day of February two thousand twenty-three.
Ms. Marjorie couldn't be here today, but something that's equally special is that Marjorie's grandson is one of our police lieutenants, and we're gonna ask Philip Bricewell if he'll come and receive this, and then we'll get it to Ms. Bowling, and I'm sure she'll be thrilled to have it. We're down to departmental reports. Is, I'm sorry. Number fourteen is to, is some police department items that need to be surplus and to be auctioned by the Redfield Auction Group, and I'd ask that y'all give me the authority to enter into agreement and move those over to be surplus. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye. Any opposed? Number fifteen is a budget revision for the police department, and this is again a housekeeping measure, just to make sure that we've got everything in the appropriate accounts, and I'd entertain a motion that we do this revision. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye. Any opposed? And... They're going into the... Yeah, I didn't read that. Okay. Now we're down to departmental reports. Is there anyone here that'd like to give a departmental report that needs to? Kenneth, you got anything? You always have some. Well, we'll go ahead and move on to council comments, and I'll start with Mr. Weiss.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Coach Bowen and Coach Holderfield at Southside High School for winning the area basketball championship, first time in a long time, and be heading to Jacksonville in a week, of course, playing for the actual district, I think, this week on Tuesday night and Thursday night at Southside, both are hosting. It's an exciting time. The teams have gone through a lot of hard work, a lot of crisis moments, I guess you could say, and they've come through victorious, and really appreciate that. As a member of the megaplex, I mean, excuse me, the mega sports complex board, I'd like to thank the City of Rainbow City and all my colleagues for the fine work they put forth a couple of weeks ago for our referee training event. I was absent last council meeting, but I do wanna thank you guys for everything you've done on that. It's really great. I'd like to congratulate, excuse me, congratulate Ms. Bowling for her milestone birthday. That's an incredible situation, and again, I would just like to thank all the workers, the people, and the citizens of Rainbow City for giving me the opportunity to serve. It's a blessing every day when I get up and I drive through this incredible city, and thank you, and God bless y'all and have a lovely evening.
Mr. Prince?
Thank you, Mayor. Keep this short tonight. It's not gonna be short if y'all keep missing one. I too want to reiterate what Coach, Councilman Weiss, the boys and the ladies basketball teams at Southside High School, congratulations to them, and best of luck this week in substate. I believe it's substate they're doing this week, and that is a true accomplishment for both of those programs, so one of the things that really made me smile tonight is the Centenarian Club. I knew I'd mess that up the first time, kinda like a posselessi, apple stock. Congratulations to a life well-lived and still going at one hundred and one years old. When you hear who the president was when she was born, it really resonates with you, and I have a mother that's ninety-four, so it kinda is special to me, 'cause I see that possibility of her making it to the age of one hundred, and what a blessing that God has bestowed on all of us, no matter how long we live, but especially for these people. And I'm very proud that our mayor started this club, and I hope a lot more of our residents get to make it into it, so. Last thing I have, today is my wonderful, beautiful wife's birthday, and I wanna wish her a happy birthday. I'm not gonna tell you how old she is, but she's same age as I am today, but I do wish her a happy birthday, and that's all I have. And everyone have a happy Valentine's Day.
Yeah, husbands, don't forget to take something home to your wife, 'cause you'll be in a bad way for Valentine's. I've just been noticing that Rainbow City is always in the news, and it's for a lot of positive things, and that is just a wonderful thing for all of us as residents of Rainbow City, that it is such a good thing. We have a lot to be thankful for. Our employees, of course, are really the backbone of our city that make it this way. We appreciate Ms. Mullenax and the service that she give the library, and sometimes I kinda, I used to be on the library board in another term that I served, and our library is so well taken care of. It is like a well-oil machine down there, and those ladies and gentlemen are just, they, there is just no, nothing that they waver from to do to keep our library in order and make sure that it serves our citizens and our children in a very positive manner, and we, we just appreciate Tina and her staff down there so much, and I think sometimes we do forget to recognize them because they, they are very quiet down there and they keep things in just perfect order, so, but we are just very fortunate to live in Rainbow City and things just to be changing and growing in a very positive manner, and that's just due to our citizens and the people who make it that way, so thank you.
Mr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna keep mine actually short. I thought that the recognition of Ms. Bowling was incredible, but the one thing that stuck out to me more than her age was being married for seventy-four years. My grandparents got married in nineteen fifty-six, so they'll celebrate sixty-seven years this year, but I mean, like I said, even more so than the age, being married for seventy-four years, what an incredible accomplishment, and Lieutenant Bradley, that's awesome that you have such an example in your life. And the only other thing I will say, Kenneth, is that I hope Mayor Taylor is exercising for Pancake Day, 'cause he's not gonna outcook me. That's all I got.
Mr. Hopper?
Ms. Bowling, could you just imagine the things that she saw? I mean, first of all, when I first saw this, the name just rang a bell, and the mayor talked about her being married to the fireman, so maybe that's it, and they talk about Philip being grandson. I said, maybe that's it, 'cause me and Philip, we've known, he said, about, what, twenty years now, and, but Beth reminded me, the Avon Lady in the Mill Village, 'cause growing up in the Mill Village, I do remember that, and, but like I said, the blessings that she saw, I mean, she, as a small child lived through the Depression, and her early twenties, she lived through World War II, then Korea, then she saw Neil Armstrong land on the moon, and then she had to deal with the Watergate crap, and then Jimmy Carter, you know, and then come Reagan. So all these things that she saw, that is just phenomenal in that hundred and one years, and I wanna echo what Anita was talking about with this Mullenax. I take it upon myself to go to the library meetings, and they have sung her praises and have dreaded this day for the last, what do we meet, every three months, or at least the last six months, but to go along with what you're saying, Tina and them do do a great job, and she does a good job of chasing money down for our people too, without coming up here to us and asking for help. She goes out here to the different national library associations and the different people to chase down monies and get grant money either through Edgewall County or the state or on the national level, and takes it upon herself to do that. A little praise here for the water department, they come save my neighborhood when we thought Noah's Ark was fixed to go down Pleasant Valley Road about ten days ago, and did it, I thought, in record time. You know, with everybody gripes on Facebook and rest social media, how long it takes them, those guys got it done in less than four hours, and it was amazing, 'cause I had called my wife and I said, hey, you better fill up everything we got for the cats and the dogs and everything else you're gonna need, because probably gonna be out for the rest of the day, 'cause I drove up and you could see it, literally, on both sides, looking like just a river running down Pleasant Valley Road itself. So I appreciate what they did. The last thing is I wanna praise everybody in Rainbow City and Edgewall County. Got me to thinking about it, everybody, probably Jamison here, will remember in the early, mid-seventies, Mayor Steve Meem started a program called AWOL, a war on litter. I know you wouldn't, and everything, but your mom and dad was here, and the thing is, is the Mayor Ford has regenerated wanting to bring that up, and it got me to thinking. In my travels, for the ones of you that don't know, I do travel a lot during the week to different parts of the state due to my job, and I will say, this has gotta be the cleanest county I travel, and that's a testament to everybody, not just us. When I go through Bessemer, you know, it's just amazing how bad it looks down through there, you know. If I go through even some of these smaller towns that I go through, the trash that are on the side that's not picked up, or any of those things, but I just wanna take time, I think, to praise everybody in Edgewall County for helping, keeping us clean and making us more attractive for tourism and hopefully future endeavors that we all have as city goes. I'm done, Mayor.
Thank you. RSVP has a free tax service at our community center starting each Wednesday, January twenty-fifth through April twelfth, from eleven-thirty to three-thirty PM, if you wanna take advantage of that. Saturday, April first of twenty twenty-three, the Lions Club has Pancake Day at six AM, six AM to noon at the Rainbow City Community Center, and I am the head chef. On Saturday, May sixth of twenty twenty-three, Rainbow City will have its Cleanup Day, and just to echo what Mr. Hopper was saying, we do have a clean city and we wanna keep it that way, and, you know, we have the occasional dump site, we find things where it's not supposed to be, and we try to clean those things up, but we are proactive. Mike Bolton with our nuisance abatement, I just wanna let you know that if you decide to dump anywhere inside the city, we're gonna find our way to figure out who you are, and then, you know, we'll take the appropriate measures to see to it that that's not your choice again. Ms. Shirley, we're just thrilled to death for her to be able to get to a place where she can retire, and just, we're so thankful for her service. And, and talking about our library, there's so much going on at our library, and I guess it's one of those things where we're actually supposed to say, the library keeps it quiet, but they really do. They, they, they're trying to, they're doing a new program now where we have, if you've got a library card, you can come by and you can stream movies, and all of that's free to our citizenry, so if you don't have your library card, get by there and get one, just so that you can, you know, not only get the books, but you can also take part in some streaming services that will allow for you to get books and movies and documentaries and those type of things. Ms. Bowling, look, I'm the lucky guy that got to go out and hang out with her for a few minutes last week, and she was just such a joy. The, her, some of her caregivers had brought her a birthday basket, and she had already gotten into the candy pretty heavy when I got there, so she was just having a great day, and I really appreciate the fact that Philip's one of our police officers and was there with her by her side and got to see his city, just pay homage to her, and just to give her her due, because she is a very, very special lady, and she's still pretty snappy too, you know, but with that, I don't have anything else. I just want you to know that Rainbow City is growing. We're trying to grow and We're trying to grow in a very positive manner, and that takes our employees and it takes our associates here, and I couldn't be more proud of the people that honestly I inherited. You know, this is not my doing. This is just, this is one of those lucky spots in my life where I got to come in and have people that do their job, do their job well, and actually care for the ones that they work for. We all know that the people out there outside of this building are the ones that sign our checks, and we don't take that lightly. And with that, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn. Thank you. Thank y'all for being here.